Now time to run to the like basic procedure and also make sure that Board of Elections, head judge and judges have their say before we are ready for the swearing in because it has to start at seven on the clock. Lock the door, Valerie cannot go anywhere anymore. Hold her down. All right, perfect. So I have Jared, Councilmember Jared Stofus here online, then you have Luke Chesek and myself here. Jimmy apologizes, but because of prior commitment, he's not here. But we have a core established, and that's why he's also here, right? So it's a little bit vibrant. All right, Jared. Okay, so the agenda is not very big, so we go right through it, okay? So we'll do a call of order. Jared Stofus.
Here.
Yeah, he's there. Luke Chesek.
Here.
And myself, I am here. So I'm going to ask everybody to please stand up for our player's allegiance. Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right. So you might have to review the agenda, so it's a little bit easier. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Luke Chesek to review the agenda, to read aloud for us, please.
One is the call to order and pledge of allegiance, which we just did. Two is review of the agenda, which we are doing right now. Three is review of council rules and procedures. Four, certification of election results with the swearing in ceremony, which is fifth on the agenda, swearing in of Valerie Woodall.
So the only thing I'm going to change is the review of the council agenda to move it down after Valerie's swearing in.
Okay.
Because that will go for the vote, so that's going to be move on to item number, let me see, one, two, three, four, number five, so we'll switch it over.
So I'm.
Number four. So certification of results will go next, followed by the swearing in, and then followed by the review of the council agenda.
Gotcha.
So move it down, all the way down to number, to number, the new number five.
The new number five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then everything else goes up.
Okay.
All right. And final last thing with the German. Okay, so.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. This agenda has been approved. So now we're going to ask our supervisor of Board of Elections, Ms. Nicole Logan, to come up to the front to certify the election results, and thank you, Nicole. Nicole has been a Board of Elections supervisor for, since before I was elected, so it's been quite a few. A lifetime now, is Nicole. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So I, my name is Nicole Logan. I'm the supervisor of the Board of Elections, and with me we have Ophelia Baxter, and we limited our participation today just because of space, but the rest of the board sends their regards. We, this was a very close election, so to Councilmember-elect, thank you so much for serving, for choosing to serve, and we look forward to seeing you in office. So I'd like to just read the official statement. I attest that these are the final election results for the City of Mount Rainier special election, which was held on Monday, April 25th, 2022. The numbers are as follow. Candidate Valerie Woodall, final count 130. Candidate Tony George, final count 108. And that is the final reading of the certified results of the election.
Right. Perfect. Thank you so much, Nicole.
Thank you. Twenty seconds.
Yeah. But I'd rather be ahead than falling behind. I definitely would also like to take this time to acknowledge some of our elected officials here with us. Delegate Julian Ivey. There you go. Yay! Delegate Juanika Fisher. Board of Education founder, Booce Strutter. And you'll be shortly hearing from our county clerk, who's here to do the swearing in officially. So that's the one that counts. Yeah! I was going to give you a whole floor, yeah. All right. Perfect. I didn't miss anybody, right? Okay, so we are right on time, which means we have about five minutes. If you guys want to drink water, arrange yourself. We'll be, we'll be sure that we're up and about to make sure for the swearing in to take place. We also have our city manager here present, Mr. Kamali. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Chief as well. Yay! Our chief of police, Chief Austin's here. Our city clerk is also here, Melissa. There you go. There you go. So Melissa worked really hard and also very close with the Board of Election, so thank you, Melissa. This is her first election, and as a bit of like historical information, this is actually the first council member special election that we've had. Mayor and council adjusted the rules. Previously, it was just if in vacancy of the mayor under six months, then a new special election. So I want to say a big thank you to our staff, but also to the Board of Election, because they took on a task to have a special election, a non-election year, and like every year they have, every election they have rose into the, to the occasion and make sure that they did this as quickly but as accurate as they needed to be. So we want to make sure, we thank you guys for that, because it was, it was a lot. You guys thought you guys were having a year off, right? Good luck! It was not going to happen this year. Maybe in two years. So saying that, you are invited to the elections next year in May. Ahead of time, doing my due diligence to make sure you're fully aware, the elections are going to be next May, and the Board of Election will be happy to know. If you register, please look out for them and be ready to go. I also would like to acknowledge Delegate Diane Fennell, who's here as well. There you go. And Senator, and Senator Maka Magustin as well. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, thank you. And it is 6:57, and since I have a couple people here, including our senators and delegates, I definitely want to say on behalf of City of Mount Rainier, thank you. It was a very
Now time to run to the like basic procedure and also make sure that Board of Elections, head judge and judges have their say before we are ready for the swearing in because it has to start at seven on the clock. Lock the door Valerie cannot go anywhere anymore. Hold her down. Alright, perfect. So I have Jared, Councilmember Jared Stofus here online then you have Luke Chesek and myself here. Jimmy apologizes but because of prior commitment he's not here. But we have a core established and that's why he's also here, right? So it's a little bit vibrant. Alright Jared, okay so. The agenda is not very big, so we go right through it, okay? So we'll do a call of order. Jared Stofus.
Here.
Yeah, he's there. Luke Chesek.
Here.
And myself, I am here. So I'm gonna ask everybody to please stand up for our player diligence. Okay, go ahead. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Alright, so you might have to review the agenda, so it's a little bit easier. So I'm gonna ask Councilmember Luke Chesek to review the agenda, to read aloud for us, please.
One is the call to order and pledge of allegiance, which we just did. Two is review of the agenda, which we are doing right now. Three is review of council rules and procedures. Four, certification of election results with the swearing in ceremony, which is fifth on the agenda, swearing in of Valerie Woodall.
So the only thing I'm gonna change is the review of the council agenda to move it down after Valerie's swearing in.
Okay.
Because that will go for the vote, so that's gonna be, move on to item number, let me see, one, two, three, four, number five, so we'll switch it over.
So I'm.
Number four. So certification of results will go next, followed by the swearing in and then followed by the review of the council agenda.
Gotcha.
So move it down, all the way down to number, to number, the new number five.
The new number five, okay.
And then everything else goes up. Alright, and final last thing with the German. Okay, so.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. This agenda has been approved. So now we're gonna ask our supervisor of Board of Elections, Ms. Nicole Logan, to come up to the front to certify the election results and, thank you Nicole. Nicole has been a Board of Elections supervisor for, since before I was elected, so it's been quite a few. A lifetime now, Nicole. Thank you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I, my name is Nicole Logan, I'm the supervisor of the Board of Elections and with me we have Ophelia Baxter and we limited our participation today just because of space, but the rest of the board sends their regards. We, this was a very close election, so to Councilmember-elect, thank you so much for serving, for choosing to serve, and we look forward to seeing you in office. So I'd like to just read the official statement. I attest that these are the final election results for the City of Mount Rainier special election, which was held on Monday, April 25th, 2022. The numbers are as follow. Candidate Valerie Woodall, final count 130. Candidate Tony George, final count 108. And that is the final reading of the certified results of the election.
Alright, perfect. Thank you so much Nicole.
Thank you, 20 seconds.
Yeah, but rather be ahead than falling behind. I definitely would also like to take this time to acknowledge some of our elected officials here with us. Delegate Julian Ivy. There you go, yay! Delegate, Delegate Juanika Fisher. Board of Education, Pamner Booze Strugler. And you'll be surely hearing from our county clerk, who's here to do the swearing in officially. So that's the one that counts. Yay! I was gonna give you a whole floor, yeah. Alright, perfect. I didn't miss anybody, right? Okay, so we are right on time, which means we have about five minutes. If you guys wanna drink water, arrange yourself. We'll be, we'll be sure that we're up and about to make sure for the swearing in to take place. We also have our city manager here present, Mr. Kamali. There you go, thank you Mr. Kamali. Chief as well, yay! Our Chief of Police, Chief Austin's here. Our city clerk is also here, Melissa. There you go, there you go. So Melissa worked really hard and also very close with the Board of Election, so thank you Melissa, this is her first election. And as a bit of like historical information, this is actually the first council member special election that we've had. Mayor and council adjusted the rules. Previously was just if in vacancy of the mayor, under six months, then a new special election. So I wanted to say a big thank you to our staff, but also to the Board of Election, because they took on a task to have a special election, a non-election year. And like every year they have, every election they have rose into the, to the occasion and make sure that they did this as quickly, but as accurate as they needed to be. So we wanna make sure, we thank you guys for that, because it was, it was a lot. You guys thought you guys were having a year off, right? Good luck! It was not gonna happen this year. Maybe in two years. So saying that, you are invited to the elections next year in May. Ahead of time, doing my due diligence, to make sure you're fully aware. The elections are gonna be next May. And the Board of Elections will be happy to know. If you register, please look out for them and be ready to go. I also would like to acknowledge Delegate Diane Fennell, who's here as well. There you go. And Senator, and Senator Maka Magustin as well. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, thank you. And it is 6:57 and since I have a couple people here, including our senators and delegates, I definitely wanna say on behalf of City of Mount Rainier, thank you. It was a very hard legislative season and you guys delivered and were able to provide the City of Mount Rainier plenty of funds and plenty of work for next year as well. So we really appreciate the hard work and thank you for being great representatives of the City of Mount Rainier and the whole entire district as well. So give them a big round of applause, because it's, it's good amount of funding. Thank you. Alright, perfect. So it is 5:57. You guys wanna start adjusting coming up? What would you guys like to do? They're lying. It has to start at seven, right? Yeah. So, um, so I'll, I'll pass the, the mic to the council members, so that way they can say something. You have one minute if you wanna say something.
One minute, man. I don't know why I keep going, words down to one minute. Valerie, thank you for taking on the responsibility of representing your neighbors on City Council. It is not an easy job. There are a lot more complaints than thank yous. But it can be very rewarding. There are a lot of things you can do to help your neighbors and when you do, you do get those thank yous and those do mean a lot. We have a lot of work. We are not the federal government, we are not the state government, we're not the county government, we don't have the resources of any of those three. Sometimes our residents think that we do have those kinds of resources, but we do not. They think we have entire staffs of people working on issues. We don't. We usually have one or maybe none, and that means you get to be that staff person working that issue. But it's important to have a full slate of representatives and you're gonna complete that for us, and so we're excited to have you on board.
Yay, Valerie. So I'm gonna ask for our county clerk and also Valerie and, and her family to come up. It's already 6:59, so that way the swearing in will start exactly at seven. And as I said, you guys getting up, I definitely wanna also thank Margaret, Margaret Booze Strugler, Board of Education, for the climate change plan. Thank you, thank you Pam. Thank you, thank you. And the whole like climate change parents as well, because they deliver on that aspect as well. So I'll, I'll give you guys the clock when it's seven and it's so yours.
Where's the camera? You can go up there to the, yeah, that works. Yeah, cameras.
So the cameras are up there. Yes. I'm so sorry. Hold on, what is it? Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna like butcher your name. Okay, so the county clerk, Mahassen Amir is here with us, so please give her a round of applause as well. She makes sure she was adjusted to our schedule and, and is here this afternoon. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay. Raise your right hand, alright. I.
I.
State your name.
Valerie Woodall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Support the Charter and laws of French George's County.
And I will support the Charter and laws of French George's County.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Councilmember Ward Two.
Councilmember of Ward Two.
For the City of Mount Rainier.
For the City of Mount Rainier.
In French George's County.
In French George's County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the city.
Of the city.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Yeah. So Allison to come up right after she signs, okay?
Okay, and over here, signature and imprint.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And here's your shade.
So now our delegation would like to give you some recognitions as well. Go ahead delegates, the floor is yours.
Glad to see you again.
Congratulations.
So first of all, congratulations, I think, to, this is a competitive thing, there were two people who raised their hand to represent Mount Rainier and do the work for the city. And so we congratulate both of them. I think we should just give everybody who chooses to raise their hand a round of applause. And I just wish you the best. And we as a team, really look forward to working with you, as we have worked with other members of the council. And we have an official citation from all of us. Be hereby known to all that sincere congratulations are offered to Valerie Woodall, Councilmember Ward Two, town of, City of Mount Rainier, have to get that fixed, okay? In recognition of the elected as Ward Two Councilmember, as a new Councilmember, we are sure you will do an outstanding job as a leader in Ward. Continue to excel for the residents in Ward Two and for the City of Mount Rainier, we'll get that taken. Presented on this, on May, second day of May 2020 and 22, from our delegation, myself, Senator Magustin, and of course the delegates Fennell, Ivy and Fisher.
Everybody ready?
Yes. So we'll take one with you guys and then Luke and I will go ahead and enjoy.
Alright, everybody ready? Three, two, one, and then do one more. Three, two, one.
Perfect. So we'll, we'll have one with Luke and us joining you guys, let's go Valerie. Okay, there you go, you're right here Valerie. You're one of us, we always have pictures of us on Instagram. Please have me, please join us. There is, perfect.
Do you want us to skitch tighter or is it? Okay.
I feel like I'm between letters.
It's okay, we're friendly, yes.
Everybody ready? Three, two, one, do one more. Three, two, one.
Just one more. Pam, I know you're not sitting over there enjoying this photo, right? So come and join this photo.
You try, you try.
Good, good way of trying to escape us, it's not gonna work. No, you're not to be out enjoying. All electric fishes, all electric fishes go up, yeah.
Alright, everybody ready? Three, two, one, do one more. Three, two, one.
Perfect, perfect.
Mayor, is it okay if I also just, we brought a check?
Of course, we, we were paying that money.
Valerie, you're on this side of you.
You're, you're on this side Valerie.
Like you said, our cash. More than a few, we had a check that we were able to bring back home from the Maryland General Assembly to the City of Mount Rainier. This is $250,000 that are grant funds going to the city for the Welcome Center, which of course you all know is a down payment. There's still gonna be more that we have to do, but we're at least gonna get it started.
I'm sorry now where you're like, there you go.
Alright, everybody ready? Three, two, one.
Who's doing our YouTube social? Do you hashtag?
You see what happens, it's fancy. When I, when I said our team deliver, our team delivers.
Now we're going to MGM.
So Valerie, you get to join us now. So anytime we now say. From now on, anytime we say like, you know, elected officials.
Yeah.
Join us. I know, just like, the opposite end, someone, I know. I was like. Pam, you always will be welcome in my chambers, you know that. There's like, I'll, I'll even make a special seat right there for you anytime you want. Okay, so, um, thank you for joining us. Can you guys do me a favor, Melissa, can you get Jared back on when we move them out? He disconnected. I think he's there. Yes, we do. But I wanna make sure my, my other, my, my, Jared becomes Vice Mayor on, in, on Wednesday. So we do a year rotation of Vice Mayors. So Jimmy's currently the Vice Mayor and then the next one is Jared. So I'm trying to make sure we're good with my Vice Mayor in case I have to go on vacations. I know the city's well taken care of. Is he there, there?
I think it just went down.
You got him? I think he's trying to run away. Jared, you're not going anywhere. There you go. Jared's like, you guys have enough quorum, see you later.
No touch him here.
This is what happens when you get fancy computers that are touched, so you see what happens? Alright Jared, you're here, right?
I am, thank you.
So do me a favor Jared, you could say a few words as well and then we'll give the floor to Valerie, okay? Go ahead.
I just wanna echo with Luke, Valerie, congratulations on joining me in Ward Two. Thank you so much for stepping up to serve the community here. Really excited to work with you, really excited, Luke mentioned, I'm really excited not to be on my own in Ward Two. Excited to work together with you and the rest of the council. You know, as Luke mentioned, there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of things going on. A lot gets asked of us, but a lot of, a lot of great opportunity to serve our community and really bring some great benefits and, and things to Mount Rainier. So, and that's in collaboration with our amazing city staff, committee, volunteers, you know, obviously the rest of the council and all our supportive delegates, senators, county representatives, school board members and everyone else that came out today. So I just, I'm really excited to work with you and thanks again.
Thank you. Yay, Jared. So I will say something, so that way the last speaker will be you, okay? So you have the whole floor and we'll stay here as long as you need us to, hopefully not beyond eight. When we said quick, quick, when we meant quick one. So I think I'll echo the sentiments, it's like, we are really happy that people went out to run. We know it's a challenge, it's a one-year term. I done two-year terms and I'll tell you this, it's a lot of work, right? So for somebody to step up for one-year term, we are very thankful. We're thankful that we had to count this, that you guys went out to knock, you guys went to meet people and I feel like both of you guys have been involved in one way or another with the city. So this city is home to you guys and I'm excited for you to be part of the team, right? I'm excited to be not the only woman in the team, right? It's like, we have a good team, but you know, you know, when, when, when we have, when we have more than 50% of women, like in, in any situation, right? We wanna make sure we have equal representation also, so we're getting there to where we need to be. But I wanna say thank you. I, I will speak in behalf of the rest of council, we're available if you need anything from us. It's about a year curve for many things to like go on. But we're here to help, here to support and as you see in this room, you have other support of other members and we all work together. That's the reality. If we have an issue, we know who to call, right? And you'll see the people that are here in this room, that's who we call. And if that's a bigger issue, we call other people, they help us reach out whoever it is. So it might sometimes seem like you're alone in this bubble, but the reality is like, we're all working to make sure that our community has the needs that are met and gets everything they need. So there're gonna be days that are gonna be extremely happy, there're days you're gonna be extremely frustrated. But remember, the happier days and the good time is a lot better than, than anything that you're able to approach and we're here for anything. So congratulations and, and welcome to you and your family, because this is a family affair. We all know, everybody here is sitting. It is our family who also puts the time and the effort with us and every single one here could tell you that. So welcome here as well, family and any advice you have. We also have, both Luke and I have little ones as well, about the same age as well, so. So we'll be here. So I will say that, thank you and welcome to the team, you know, so yay! So now the floor is yours.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you everyone for coming out. I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you for the Board of Elections, for coming out and helping run a smooth election process and city staff for that as well. I'm humbled and honored to serve Mount Rainier City Council and I look forward to working with City Council to roll up our sleeves and get to work, so.
Okay, so as it is tradition for every day, right, the new council member, our first vote is our council rules and procedures. So they get to vote on something tonight before they go home and not a German only, okay? So you have in front of you the council rules and procedures. If you vote on and if you see there's something you wanna adjust, this is the agreement that we as mayor and council take. It is not in our charter, but it definitely is something that we agree on when it comes to, you know, when we're at the podium, make sure that we follow through with each other and we hold each other accountable. All of that is part of it. I know that you guys, for, usually the mayor is the one that chairs, if I'm not here, our Vice Mayor, in this case, Jared will be taking the Vice Mayor role for one year. And then he'll follow Luke and then he'll go on, you know, on it. So that's how far the resolution is. We, they started doing this quite a bit of time to also have like, you know, more of a balance in trying to get experience for every member of council. So it becomes a bit beneficial. So saying that, I would like to open it up to the council. Luke, the floor is yours.
So we're not gonna ask you to review this all in 20 seconds and know what you're voting on. But it is very important for all of us to understand that there are rules and procedure. Former councilmember Brian Nedler was very picky about our procedures and it took me a while to realize that that is with very good reason. We can have meetings that can get, there's, sometimes there's a frustration when you just can't have a discussion. And sometimes you're frustrated as an elected official that you just can't talk things through without abiding by rules. And sometimes there's a frustration from residents that they just can't get into a back and forth. But on the other hand, those conversations can quickly get out of hand and you can find yourself down a rabbit hole. And there's usually a lot of work to get done on a meeting and unless we wanna stay there till two in the morning, you have to get that work done. And going down those rabbit holes doesn't do anybody any good. It can create arguments and frustrations and can create a slog of a democratic process. So there is a tension there with the frustration that some people can have, but then the need for, for proper process. So we have these rules written down, take a look at them, understand how many minutes you may have to comment on a subject, how many minutes our residents may have to comment on a subject. There are all sorts of motions we can make. I know about 20% of them. So take a look at that, see what you can do there. We don't use them all because, you know, we can bleed into discussion at some points in time to just kinda figure out where we are, especially at a work session. But there are also rules for interacting with staff. You know, we manage one staff person, that's Mr. Kamali over there, and he is great. And anything we need, we can go to him and he can, he can do things for us. That doesn't mean you can't talk to other staff. You can and should, especially if there's an issue that a resident has, it's a public works issue. But this covers sort of the rules for engagement with staff, which some councilmembers have gotten themselves in a little bit of water for that in the past. And it's never a good situation when folks are leaning into the staff and so you gotta wanna be mindful of that. But we can always amend these whenever you want, so if you see something in here that you don't like or you wanna change, you just put it on an agenda, we can talk about it and, and we usually find consensus pretty much all the time. There's not, there's not too many times where there are many disagreements. So, I mean, there are disagreements, but not too bad.
Yeah. I think the goal ultimately is like, even if you disagree on a vote, majority carries, so that vote might as well be yours and your job is to follow through like the procedure and be available and work as a team. I mean, I might not always agree with my council and they won't ever agree with me, but you know, there's like, once we leave the meeting, you know, we have a mutual respect that we're okay. And that has to be ultimately what, what it is about, right? Perfect. So Jared, anything to add?
Yeah, not, not a lot. I just wanted to thank Luke for that overview and I will, I will just say, I was, Valerie, I was in the same place as you were last year and I, you know, was looking at this big packet and it, it makes a lot, it made a lot more sense to me, it makes a lot more sense to me now. You know, we have a really well-written council rules and procedures that very clearly lays out how we can have a very smooth flowing process for council and discussion and, and public input. So, you know, today, today might be a little overwhelming, but definitely encourage you to dig in and continue to refer and come back to this document as you go, as you go through the next weeks and, and months. But it's, you know, we have, again, great processes, you know, and, and great. you know, and, and great, and great structure. So I just wanted to thank, thank folks that came before me for making sure we have that and putting that together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so. Your turn.
All right.
You have a question or anything to add?
No, I think I'm, I'm doing a quick scan as we go, so I will look further into it, but it looks pretty good so far, so.
Perfect.
All right, I'll move that we approve the council rules and procedures.
I'll second.
Second.
It has properly been moved by Luke Chesek, second by Valerie Woodall. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none, the council rules and procedures have been adopted, so yeah to your first piece of legislation adopted. And I know we're all crying for the next one, sad tears, because nobody wants to leave the City of Mount Rainier, right? I'm, I'm gonna have to break it to you, we have to go home, right? Okay, so item number six on the agenda is adjournment. Do you have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
It's been, it's been properly.
So you can hear, so you can hear me.
So it's been properly moved and second and third on it, seeing no objection, no abstention. This meeting has been adjourned. Thank you so much, thank you everybody for coming.
Way to go Valerie. Congratulations.